Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the January twenty first, twenty twenty meeting at the Penn County City Hall. Roll call.
Okay. Chairperson Kini?
Here.
Chairperson Betcher?
Here.
Chairperson Quier?
Here.
Chairperson Saha?
Here.
Chairperson Laporte?
Here.
Chairperson Ford?
Here.
And Mayor Gibson.
Here.
Opening ceremony.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll support. We have a motion to approve the agenda with a support. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. In public comment, I'm gonna do a few things first here before we go on to the open public hearing and the DDA plan renewal. If I could have Mr. Bokart come up front. This is a proclamation for, I'll just read it, by the mayor and the Penn County City Council, whereas Jim Bokart has been with the city of Penn County for thirty years. Whereas the city of Penn County wishes to congratulate Jim Bokart for his thirty years of service to the city of Penn County. Resolve that the mayor and the Penn County City Council designate January fifteenth as Jim Bokart Day. This proclamation presented on the twenty-first day of January twenty twenty. So, Mr. Bokart?
Thank you.
The city thanks you and appreciate it.
Hearing's here. Appreciate it. Been really good work most of the city. Thank you.
Myself, I'd like to add item E. An unfinished business. The NDA special assessment. Anything else added or deleted? At this time, a motion to suspend the city council's regular meeting and to open the public hearing.
I make a motion to suspend the council meeting and open the public hearing. I'll support.
We have a motion to suspend the city council regular meeting and open to public hearing and support it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item two, overview of the proposed development plan and tax increment financial plan.
Brian Saha, DDA chair and also council member. Kevin Kilby is here, representative of DDA. And will, along with myself and him, will overview the proposed plan for the downtown development authority renewal. Extension plan. The DDA itself was started in nineteen ninety and it was adopted by the city at that point in time with the passage of twenty-six, November first of nineteen eighty-nine. And since that, the twenty-year plan, went through that period of time. And it actually came up for renewal in two thousand, two thousand ten. And was renewed by city council in April of two thousand nine to extend it another ten years, which brings us to the current date of it expiring, our current plan expiring on April fourth of two thousand twenty. So, this is where we're at as far as asking the city and the city council to adopt and renew the downtown development plan, renew the ordinances of ordinance seven, in ordinance eight, in ordinance nine, seven, as proposed other than your packets. And just to give you a little history overview of downtown development authority, once again was organized, organized in nineteen eighty-nine and became effective in nineteen ninety. Our first collections were in nineteen ninety in August, where we had a collection of about fifty-seven hundred dollars. The, how the DDA works, it created a baseline of commercial values of properties and within the district itself. The downtown development district encompasses the commercial corridors. On the M thirteen corridor, Kaiser Street corridor downtown here and a connection point between Third Street and the highway corridor. Those commercial values that were used at that time creates a baseline. And at that point in time, nineteen eighty-nine, the baseline was four million, four hundred eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So, since that point in time, over the years, whatever that taxable value that has grown, that's how the DDA collects its funds, based on that increase in the taxable value within the district itself. And that is the taxing financing plan, which we collect these funds based on the millions rates between all the collection. Municipal authorities that we are allowed to collect against, four-four, which is the city of Penn County, Bay County, Bay Metro Bus, and Delta College. So, those are the taxing entities which we get our proceeds from, based on our, based on the taxable, tax payments paid by the commercial parcels within that district in the city of Penn County. Over the years, we have done a lot of progressive things in spending for the city and for projects, major ones throughout the years. One of the bigger ones were downtown redevelopment, the downtown district relocation of the post office was one of our first big plans, project nineteen ninety, ninety-two, ninety-three. Post office at that time was out on the highway. We moved it downtown to keep the flow of vehicles coming to downtown to make sure this district doesn't die like a lot of other towns. Trying to keep the traffic down in the, in the district down here. So, that was a major project. We purchased the building and renovated for the post office use. Actually owned the building and we then, within about five, six, seven, eight years, as I recall by memory, we, a vendor came in and asked if they wanted to sell it. We did sell it to a private store, sold it back on the tax bill. So, other big, big projects with the highway project, highway sidewalk project of ninety-four, ninety-five, that was about two hundred, two thousand dollars. DDA paid for all of some grants that we obtained at that period of time. We also have one of the first Brownsville redevelopment plans, along with the DDA helped assist to redevelop plenty of properties here downtown, which was hardware. Actually, Martin Dale's and the old hotel bar. We demolished some buildings and made the space where the current library is at that time. So, we helped redevelop that parcel for the use to build a library on that, at that site. Other ones, the street skate plan on the highway was a DDA plan along with the city and M dot, a combination project, and that was well over a million dollars. Streetscape here in Kaiser Street corridor was also a DDA plan, which was the sidewalk redevelopment down here in the streetlights. Same with the M five corridor out there. We've done a lot of other different things, helped the city with funding with district and engineering and infrastructure improvements over the years. And basically, we're always there to assist the city in any way possible for infrastructure improvements or seed money for applying for grants for different things, for marketing plans and, and other engineering plans. And through the years, we have done quite a bit of investment of our funds, basically over the years, coming up with about, since nineteen ninety, of almost two point nine million dollars in investment, through the DDA and a combination of grants and cooperation with the city and other entities, of reinvesting that money back into the city and the city infrastructure and, and within the district. Based on that, just wanted to, our tax collections, just to give you a breakdown, based on the, the taxing entities of which we collect from the city of Penn County annually, this year, for example, would, we receive about thirty-four thousand dollars through the taxing financing plan, from the city, through the taxation of the city. Bay County, it crays out, that's what Bay Metro Bus in two, about twenty-one thousand dollars, a little over, and Delta College, about forty-eight hundred dollars. So, based on our current, current tax capture, through our circle plan, which is about fifty-nine thousand this, this year, budgeted, the city of Penn County revenues generated by our taxing financing, crays out about fifty-seven percent, Bay County is thirty-six percent of our revenue, and Delta College, eight percent of our revenue. So, in addition to keeping our own tax money for, that are generated by local businesses who do these projects within town, we also have the leverage of those funds going to the county and Delta College come back to the city of Penn County for, for such projects. So, it's a good leverage program, at least, at least to my mind, anyway. And I think most of our board members and the people that have been involved with this over the years. And also, just a summary, I think, the plan itself, I, I've been on the board since its inception, along with Commissioner Mike over here, a couple, probably a couple other people in the audience, we have some DDA board members in the audience also. But it's been a pretty proactive, progressive body that aided the city in developing a lot of things that probably wouldn't have got done over the years without DDA being there. So, I think it's been a really good proactive planning tool for the city and been a good asset for the city throughout the years. We hope and ask for, you know, support to support the plan and, and at our next meeting, when it comes up for a vote, to, I'll support it and pass it so we can keep, keep moving on with the project itself.
About that?
Yeah.
Question Bob?
Yeah, as your new manager, I want to say welcome, happy new year. I'm liking to think we're off to a good start, and we're headed in a new course in a better direction. Been dealing with DDAs and TIPs for about eighteen years. We don't have a lot of tools here, we don't have a lot of money here, but this would make sense. You just heard Brian say, we capture about twenty-five thousand out of the city taxes to go with about thirty-two thousand that we captured from the city. So, if my math is right, these guys are working with the city, working with me, working with the council to move things ahead. That extra twenty-five thousand is huge, that might be all we have for a year to move things forward. So, just want to say, this is an old practice of the city, we're looking at making things even better as we move ahead in the future, but we do need to rally around this. We do have a lot of work that needs to be done in our community, and these guys are eligible to help with a lot of challenges that we're faced with as a community. So, I'm just saying, as the new man, I think this is a great path that we're on, I think we need to continue this path, and I think we need to continue to keep the DDA and the city working close together on goals and projects. And Brian did mention, but we have a wonderful website that they paid for and put up there for us. So, I am really looking for support for this to continue, I'm asking the community and the council to get behind it. And you will see me working with that group to bring other things to the table, and I know we've got good leadership over there. So, just wanted you to hear my perspective on this tonight, and we will be voting on this next one.
Kevin, representative of DDA, if you have anything to say?
Yeah, I'll just add a couple things, if I can piggyback on what Brian said. Kevin Kilby from Drawmores. The, hopefully everybody picked up a copy of the plan when you came in, as a city hall in the front cover there. It should be back there, if you don't have one, ask them, they'll make sure you get one.
I think we made about thirty of them today.
So, for the board, just sorry, the procedure to amend the plan, as I follow, all the taxing jurisdictions have been given notice, all the notices went out in the favor and were posted correctly, so we're compliant with the act to go ahead and amend the current development tip plan. The amendments that we're talking here are mostly project-based, and so, the DDA can only perform projects that are set forth in the plan. So, if it's not in the plan, the DDA can't do it. So, of course, every twenty years, ten years, depending on the duration of the plan, the municipality goes in and they amend the plan to add current projects that the DDA is looking at doing. That's one of the main reasons for the amendment, is to update the plans with regard to the direction which the city and the DDA want to move forward. If you happen to have one of the plans, right before the exhibits is a map of the DDA district, it's an important thing to note, as Brian pointed out, the DDA only operates in the commercial corridor, not unresidential parcel of property, so it doesn't affect your house, this is everybody's aware, and the DDA is not letting any milliards. So, what happens is, back in nineteen ninety, just consider property taxes were frozen in time. And then when this redevelopment, development happens, property taxes continue to grow, and the DDA captures from the other taxing jurisdictions, the difference between nineteen ninety frozen in time and where it is today. And that's how they receive their revenue to operate. So, there is no tax levied by the DDA. If the DDA went away today, the taxes would not change on those parcel of property that are currently being taxed, because again, the DDA won't have captured to grow up on that since nineteen ninety. And with regard to the plan itself, the proposals extended through twenty forty, the only objection we had to that was received from Bay County. They asked for a shorter term, when we had our meeting with them. Basically, the philosophy of the DDA is, it costs a lot of money to do this, it took about twenty-five percent of their yearly budget to amend it, and therefore, they would have preferred the council to remain at twenty forty. The council's free to amend that date, obviously, but the DDA would ask that he keeps twenty forty as the date for the proposed revision. Other than that, the money that it captures from the city and the county, Bay Metro and Delta College, as Brian said, has been used over the years to leverage more money in the form of grants and so forth, which is why when he says their budget is fifty thousand dollars a year, but in the last ten years or whatever, they've been able to leverage about two point nine million, that's because they have that extra money for the grants. And that helps the city with water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, roads, streetscapes, the new welcome to Penn County signs around the gateways, those sort of projects. So, that's the type of stuff the DDA does. Again, I just remind you that it doesn't affect residential, there is no taxes involved in this, it's a capture on existing taxes only, so it's an accounting thing back and forth between the taxing jurisdictions. Other than that, the, I don't have anything to add, but I'll answer questions if anybody has any, when the time comes.
Thank you, Kevin and Brian, for all the work you've done on the DDA. Public comment from any citizen, taxpayer, or property owner at this time?
Mayor, I'm sorry, Mike, we need to get Mike next, he's got a two-hour drive home we promised to get him up. Either way, I just wanted you to know. Okay.
No public comment? Just Durant check?
This is public comment on the DDA?
Yes.
I, I'm Mike Durant check, Bay County Commissioner, along with Brian. Seems like yesterday, when it was thirty or forty years ago, we set this up. I'm wholeheartedly in support of the, of the going out twenty years, and I'll do whatever I can to make sure that, you know, you guys get to twenty years, so, for whatever it's worth, keep on. There's a lot of projects, what, as Brian stated, that have happened in the city of Penn County, that would not, would not have happened if it were not for the DDA. Just look back at the post office, and I'm not going to list them all, but you write around town, I mean, they're all, they're all over it. So, money stays here, some of the county commissioners don't, it's such a, in a scheme of things for the county, hundred thirty-nine million dollar budget, this is not a big, you know, it's not like they're giving us anything, because they owe us, as far as I'm concerned, because of community building, but that's another battle that went on about twenty-three years or so. Keep on doing what you're doing, you're doing a good job. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Any other public comment? Comments from any representative from the following public bodies? Bay County? City of Penn County? Bay Metro Transit Authority? Delta College? Comments from any member of the Downtown Development Authority Board or Penn County City Council?
Yes, Mayor. I would just like to give a thing, Mayor Fortem Saha, for all the work he's done. He's got so many things going on, he's taking time to do all of this, I appreciate it. And I just got one question is, what projects, where do you see it in the future, what projects do you like to get tackled in ten years, the wait span, or ten, twenty years?
Well, back. Go to the plan itself, the page from about sixteen. Page sixteen on it are all the projects that we identified, identified and accomplished through this, that period of time. So, encompass all these ideas that we, we got together with city officials, DDA board, Chamber of Commerce, tool systems. We need to brainstorm to accomplish these ideas that are in the plan itself for, for the, you know, the extension. So, all these ideas are in there, like Kevin explained, as far as the development plan, these, these are, these are our ten commands, more or less. So, we have to keep within the structure of, of projects and hopefully accomplish them within the year period, intermediate period, or long-term period, whatever we can accomplish through that twenty-year span.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to close public hearing and enter back into the city council's regular meeting.
I'll make the motion to close public hearing and resume our city council's regular meeting. I'll support.
We have a motion to close the public hearing and enter back into the city council's regular meeting with support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I have a question at this time. Matt Wood? Do I call on Mr. Shepherd at this time, or go to the presentation?
That is that council's pleasure. I mean, you have a gentleman that has traveled yet, and you're also paying a person, so it's really at your discretion.
I know which one I want to take.
It is totally at council's discretion which one you'd like to proceed with.
The attorneys, they have five minutes, Mike Ryan needs twenty or twenty-five minutes. So, it's all right, we're moving this direction.
Mr. Shepherd?
All right. I am here for-
Mr. Shepherd is our city attorney.
New business, item A, the dangerous building owned by Mr. Elpers. I've sent him a notice again, and would ask if he's here and wants to address council, to identify himself. It was actually mailed January sixth, telling him of council's review of the condemned building, and that it's going to be the recommendation, and it is the recommendation of staff, and I apologize if I'm a little worse, I just have taken a lot of medication lately, but in any event, I prepared a resolution, and it is self-explanatory that we have gone through the state statute and created a dangerous building ordinance for the city to be able to condemn buildings that are in a state of disrepair, dilapidation, unsafe, uninhabitable, et cetera. This particular building had some structural components removed without a building permit, and as a result of removing some of the structural interior walls, had a roof collapse, has sidewalks, alleys blocked off, and has just basically openings that can allow animals and vermin to go inside. So, we had the hearing officer who was appointed by the city, Mr. Al Hugo, here are the proofs, look at the pictures, and he gave Mr. Elpers a ten-day grace period to come tear the building down himself, or submit an engineered plan of how it could be rebuilt. The cost of rebuilding the building likely far exceeds the value of the building. Mr. Elpers has been given at least three different certified mailings with notices along every step of the way, and, and so it is my recommendation that someone sponsor or move the resolution, which sets forth this basic background information. And then the therefore, or the resolution part, is that it then instructs staff to go ahead, get a competent qualified contractor, get bids as necessary, get all of the permits through the contractor, get the inspections for any type of EPA, or now Eagle DEQ remediation, if there's mold or anything in there, and then have it disposed of, and the state statute, as well as your ordinance, allows all of those costs to be put on the tax bill. Chances are, in our practice, because a vacant lot isn't going to be worth the cost of turning it down, or people would do it themselves, chances are it will be reverted back, but at least it'll be safe again, it won't create a detriment to the neighborhood, and it can be then optioned by the city and potentially used, or the DDA. or the DDA can get involved in funding that, as I, as I understand, I think I heard. But if it's in the district, and then you can do a redevelopment with it. So, that's my recommendation, I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Just a clarification, the bids would come back here for approval, correct?
Yes, they should, well, actually, the resolution authorizes you to accept the bids and do them. But, they should come back for pro forma, take the lowest bidder.
I agree, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I recognize the resolution should be approved today, so it helps a lot. I will, I will present the City of Pin County Resolution Ratifying Dangerous Buildings Hearing Officer Report and Recommendations Proceeding with Demolition. This matter having come on for hearing January twenty first, two thousand twenty, based upon Dangerous Building Hearing Officer Report and Recommendations dated December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, whereas the city council pursuing to order the state statute is to consider the demolition in light of the report and recommendations, and whereas the city council is to ratify the report recommendations and direct the city staff to obtain proposals for cause of demolition of the structure. And whereas pursuant to state statutes upon which the city council is based, the cost may be assessed against the property and specials, as a special assessment. Now, therefore be resolved that the reported recommendations of the Dangerous Building Hearing Officer attached here to exhibit one and purported hereby reference is ratified and confirmed in every aspect, respect. And be further resolved city staff is directed to attend services of a qualified and competent demolition contractor to demolish the structure located at two-two-nine Kaiser Street in County Michigan parcel number zero-nine dash one-eight-zero P. Paul O. Five, zero-zero-six, zero-zero-seven, dash, zero-zero. And be further resolved that all costs associated with the project, including attorney costs, ring officer fees, and demolition fees, and make it, the vacant property saved shall be assessed through the parcel as a special assessment.
Denying will support.
We have a resolution ratifying Dangerous Building Hearing Officers' Report and Recommendation and Proceeding with Demolition. And, we have a second, any discussion?
How soon will we be starting to get bids on demolition?
I got a list of contractors yesterday, but Lars say I gotta be honest, it's probably two weeks before I'd even touch it, right? Still have a policy book and some financial stuff ahead of it, but, and more likely, they're gonna wanna come in the spring, so I'd say probably April, we'll see movement, as far as physical movement.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
I'd be more comfortable with roll call, because it is countable and spending money.
Yeah, and I had it going.
Roll call.
Councilman Saha?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laporte?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coier?
Yes.
Councilwoman Betcher?
Yes.
Councilman Keeney?
Yes.
And Mayor Gibson?
Yes.
Okay, motion was carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you, Mr. Brian.
Okay, presentation. We have Mr. Ingle with the Michigan Rural Water and Water Assessment Management Plan.
Thank you, guys, I've got some business cards here, I'll hand that to you guys, this is my projector's warming up. Couple of those out there. My projector's warming up here, well, just a second here. So actually, I used to live in Pin County back in the late sixties, my father was the junior high teacher and the justice of the peace back in the, well, probably late sixties in there. So we lived on Water Street after. Anyway, so the reason I'm here today, you guys I think are familiar, you, the state enacted this new rule that you have to do a water system asset management plan. And every city served a population of a thousand or more, the water system had to do these plans, and they had to be submitted last January seventeen, they had to be submitted, actually. So, or eighteen, excuse me, so you guys submitted your plan and it got rejected because it didn't come with, as part of that, you had to do a water rate analysis, that was not submitted as part of that plan. So it got rejected, your deadline, I think, was December first, and Don got an extension till, was it April first? Somewhere.
I believe March first.
March first, okay. So what this state is saying, and this full of asset management rule that says, you have to look at your, your ass, your water assets, you know, where they were, how old are they, and then ultimately the bottom line is, what is the cost to operate your system? And are you charging rates to generate that much revenue? So basically, the state is saying, find out how much it costs to operate your system, and then your rates have to generate that revenue. Bottom line is, then you have to submit that, then they're gonna go through the calculations and determine, yeah, everything checks out. If it doesn't check out, again, you'll be in violation and they'll say, your rates are not supporting the budget you got. So whatever budget you adopt, they just wanna say, make sure your rates support that budget. So, I guess that's the nutshell, why I'm here, I got rejected, so I kinda came back and I worked with Tim in the past, and George and the guys, and Don, and so I'm kinda going through this. But just to kind of front is, my job is, is not to recommend or suggest this is what you wanna charge. I don't care what you guys charge, it's your water system, it's your city. My job is to really take your budget numbers and divide them by the gallons of water and the number of customers and figure out the actual rate calculation based on whatever your budget is, based on the number of customers and the gallons of water. Ultimately, it's a pretty simple calculation, your budget divided by your revenue source, and this is what you charge. So that's what I've kinda done here, like looked through the pages and give you the background. But at no point am I telling you, this is what you need to charge, or this is what you should charge. You're gonna tell me what you wanna do, what kinda make it happen, but ultimately, whatever you said in the state, it's kinda gotta balance, right? So, anyway, we'll kind of go through this, and I guess that's, you see that all right, I'm assuming? So let's talk about your, your current water rates right now. You've got, a little different than a majority of the communities I work with, you've just got a straight cost per thousand gallons. I think right now, what is it, eight dollars and twenty cents per thousand gallons, would you guys, so like, did you guys get a handle on this? If you did, it probably is a little bit different because Bay County just raised their water rates, so I had to modify it today. So the numbers in your pack are gonna be a little different than what I've got up here, because Bay County had that increase recently, right? So. What you guys are charging, what, eight dollars and twenty cents per thousand gallons? You have a question, Gerald, or you?
I don't think I have one.
Okay. We could get you one afterwards, you guys there. Well, it is that one, but the numbers have changed because the Bay County numbers did change, so.
And, we made some changes today. Hey, Mike, did you change us from a three month cycle to a two month cycle of your reworking?
Yeah, yeah.
So part of the change was for me.
Yeah, so the handouts probably, we, we did make a couple of changes, so I just kinda keep them as a reference, and we'll get you some new handouts tomorrow, there, we print this off, with you guys there. So currently, you guys are, it's gonna say eight dollars and twenty cents per thousand gallons, and you bill quarterly, on a quarterly basis. Making sense, everybody? Okay. So most communities will have what they call a ready to serve charge upfront. Everybody pays so much money upfront, that's guaranteed revenue, but then you pay a cost per thousand gallons on top of that. So the quarterly charges Bob mentioned, so Bob requested today, he might have caught and showed up, instead of quarterly, what if we do, what if we did every two months, so your bill would be, every two months would be your bill, instead of the three month bill. You know, the water rates are getting higher across the state, we're seeing communities go from the quarterly down to the bi-monthly, even to the monthly. Everybody's raising their water rates and, you know, as it gets higher and higher, it becomes more cumbersome for, for customers to pay, so like, the time frequency has gone down a little bit. This kinda matches Bob's request of what's going on across the state in there, so. Does have a question over here?
No, we're just sharing.
Okay, it's working.
Sorry.
No, no, don't apologize. So anyway, so, we looked, we looked at two things for you guys, we looked at the, going to the, the bi-monthly billing, and then we looked at keeping your standard format, just a straight cost per thousand gallons, exactly as you're doing. And then we looked at, what if we did that ready to serve charge, like the majority of the communities are doing? So you pay this ready to shirt, shirt, serve charge upfront, and then you pay for the cost of water above and beyond that. It's gonna generate the same revenue, it's just a matter of how you collect that revenue. The ready to serve charge again is guaranteed revenue, you get it no matter what, if you have a customer reasons a thousand gallons or a zero gallon, you still get this ready to serve revenue, because it's guaranteed money upfront up there. Alright, so we kinda looked at your customer base, looked at the different meter sizes. You see over here, we've got, you know, we got your three quarters, you mean, those are your standard homeowners, you've got a majority of your customers by far, homeowners, and you've got a few of the larger meters. So it's ready to serve charge, and we did one of the options, it will increase as the size of the water meter increases. So we'll kinda cover that a little bit on here, alright? So then we'll go up here, one of the issues we talked about, you guys, is the units of water, so like, almost every city in the state of Michigan, your customers are using a little bit less water each year, and that's just the way it is, because of technology alone, they come up with that. But you went from twenty-seven, twenty-six, to twenty-four, at the same time, you're purchasing a little less water from Bay County. So it's kind of, it's not necessarily affecting your budget, it's, other communities have wells, they pump the water, but they sell less water, they have less revenue, but you're, you're purchasing less water, so it kinda evens itself out on there, alright? But you're selling right around the twenty, twenty-five million gallons of water each year. And I'm anticipating that, that trend will probably continue, so your water sales will go down, but you're also gonna be purchasing less from Bay County. Or hopefully, the same, and hopefully it's not gonna have to, gallons you purchase will not increase, hopefully. The issues that we always look at in a, in a rate study is, you know, how much money do you have in the bank? And some of the communities I work with, they have an excessive amount of money in the bank. And some, like, if you guys, since it's from October, I believe, don't have a lot of money. So, there's a rule of thumb from a county standard, you wanna have a minimum of six months of your budget in the, in, in, in the bank account. Just in case something were to happen. You guys are kinda below that threshold, that's probably kind of a dangerous place to be, right there. You know, one large water main break under the highway, probably eat that up in a, in a day and a half. So you probably haven't got money in the bank, and that's, will kinda help you correct that a little bit. One of the things we did base this on, now, Don gave me this information in November. You guys have this hydrant rental fee, is that correct, Don, you guys are enacted this already?
We just went back to that, per the auditor's recommendation.
So you're gonna continue on with this hydrant rental fee, that's gonna supplement your water rates. Where is that coming from?
General fund, same place we pay for city hall, a part of the DPW and all of the police expenses, same place. We're stealing it, put it in the water fund.
Okay. So this is, uh, this is gonna substantize your water rates, keep everybody's water rate in town a little bit lower, because we got this extra revenue coming in, alright? So the research was done with that in mind. We'll go up here, so, kinda look at your, see your basic expenses, we went back, look at your expenses, we've got your labor and benefits, you got all your other expenses in there. Nothing is out of line, it's all, it's just basic expenses, that's what it is. Look back at your water costs from Bay County, and it's just gone up. So it's gone up about three and a half percent the last couple of years, anticipating. So we also do the three and a half percent going forward, if it changes, we can, we can alter this, but, so originally, maybe, before that went up, I think we planned at a hundred twenty-six thousand dollars, but they raised the rate, so I think our budget jumped to, the, the, the rate study rated a budget a hundred thirty because of the extra cost of, I think they raised it fifteen cents, was it? So, we're gonna look at the hundred thirty thousand, generating that revenue to pay them back. One of the things we also look at is, we're gonna look at, going back to the last four years here. And we looked at your, your profit loss, so this is gonna be a little different than, than your audit. When you look at your audit and your water system, you say, did we make money, did we lose money? You know, in that audit, you got depreciation in there, it's kinda hard sometimes to see, did, did we actually make any money? What's going on there? So we looked at just purely cash in and cash out, what are we collecting revenue and what are we spending? And we looked at the, the last couple of years here, and you've lost money consistently. Every year, you're not losing a lot of money, but you're losing money every single year, you're just, your revenues are just not generating, they're covering expenses. Now, some years you got all their major expenses, and some years you have minor expenses, but they're, they're just not covering it. So, you just looking at that, you think, we gotta generate more revenue, right? That's just kinda the way it is on there, so. Go up here. So one of the things the state's gonna wanna see is, your, your rate study, but they're really hurt nowadays about a capital improvement plan. And their word has just come out that they're, you guys will submit this within the next two months, but the word's coming out that within the next ten months, they're gonna ask for updates already, again, based on a new lead and copper rule, replace the lead service lines, so you're gonna be doing this again in the next year anyway, just, just like everybody else is. One of the things you're looking for in that new rule is, lead and copper rule, you know, replacing old water mains, if you got the lead services, from the water main to the proctor line, and then from the proctor line into the house. You guys remember that stuff at all? A little bit, okay, so. I did, the capital, I mean, bare minimum, I just think I got twenty thousand in there. We looked at, you got twenty-one thousand feet of four inch water main. And the assumption is, some of that's gonna be pretty old, but it may, may not contain some lead loose next. So I, I didn't include that really in there, it's just, it's kinda like a forewarning, there's some other stuff coming down the line next year or two that's probably gonna, really gonna raise your rates even further, right? So, again, bottom line, we're gonna take your budget, we're gonna divide it by the gallons of water yourself, and we'll come up with a rate. Kinda did that right here, so we kinda enlarged it a little bit. So I looked at that, we got your, this is the fiscal year budget, we got your labor expenses, operational expenses, we got your water purchase from Bay County. We got that, fighter hydro rental fee going in there, so just our basic expenses subtracting that fighter hydro rental fee, we're at nine forty-two already, and you're at eight twenty. So, there, there's no surplus in there, there's no slush fund, there's no, no contingent, that's just your, your everyday expenses, we're just, so we're looking at an increase just to cover your everyday expenses. I did stick some money, almost twenty thousand, never capital, cost under eighty-four cents. That one there, that twenty thousand, is really what you as a council members can say yea or nay on. This part up here, that's, that's the budget you adopted, that's what the state's gonna wanna see, they're gonna wanna see that rate, generate capital money to cover the adopted budget, you guys. So in fair bones, you're gonna go there, because the state's gonna force you to do it. And then you're gonna pick some capital funding, and if you send that in without any capital, they may only say, they may let you do a two or three year plan where you do maybe zero capital, but they're gonna wanna see some capital money in there to say, sooner or later, you're gonna repair a water main, you're gonna replace a water main, sooner or later, you're gonna need some extra money beyond that thirty-seven thousand you got in the bank. But you probably got some, you probably, you can probably play with that a little bit, eh? Whether you send it in with a zero this year, or maybe some the next year, I can't say what the state's gonna do, may they be rejected, they may want to talk to you, they may accept it, they may say that's a good plan, I don't know, but that's, well, the only thing you're really play with is whether you do anything with your capital. And now knowing that that asset management plan is gonna watch you, include your lead and copper service lines and stuff. Twenty twenty thousand is not a lot, but that's what you got to play with, basically. Twenty, twenty thousand is not a lot, but that's what you got to play with basically, I think. So yeah, we just take that budget, divide it by the gallons of water we're going to sell, and again, you can see like for the labor, we just divide that figure by the gallons of water, it's four dollars and basically twenty cents. We're going to take the operational divided by the gallons of water, it's like two dollars and ninety-nine cents. The water purchase really equates to five dollars and fifty-five cents. Just add them all up, we're going to subtract that fire hydrant fee, lowers that rate, and wind up with a nine forty-two. The hard part is getting the budget, making sure we get the accurate numbers, and we got the accurate gallons of water, getting all the data in there, that's just, just a rig calculation, you know? So, I guess that would be option one, and then the second option we did do with the ready to serve charge. So, I'll kind of pause right there. You got any thoughts or questions, am I confusing anybody, or? Any ideas, or?
I have a couple of questions, if I might, a couple of comments, I think in particular for the audience of the council. When, on your sheet up there, that's negative seventy-eight thousand, does that assume we're putting that in next year, or that three hundred thousand is going to cover that, that's going to become a zero?
Well, the three hundred thousand is your budget, the seventy-eight thousand is that fire hydrant money. And we divide the seventy-eight thousand by the gallon of water, and it reduces the water rate by three dollars and thirty cents. It just shows the calculation in there that that is being applied to it, yes.
So that would assume that we're going to put that in for next year, moving forward, moving forward.
Yes, this is something I issued with budget, yeah?
Is that an upper the council's comfortable with? To be, when we talked recently about trying to shore up a hundred ten thousand dollar difference from last year, this is part of it. Are we willing to take on that seventy-eight thousand though, and we're creating pinches and binds at other places in the city? I don't think I need to get into that, we know.
You're saying that, that's in the general fund right now?
I'm saying, we're getting ready to make the transfer now, because the water funds in the black are in the negative, we have to move, I think, seventy or seventy-five that's been budgeted, and it's not going to make it till June. Do we want to continue this practice? I'm just asking, I think we could cut capital improvement at half, bring that down a bit, and hope we have a good couple of years, so we're building up the fund. I'm not sure we want to continue to swallow almost eighty thousand in operational money to fund the water department. Just asking. It's been underfunded for a long time, I mean, a long time, we don't even have prints for our water system. We have valves that haven't been exercised, I'm guessing, in ten or fifteen years, and it exercises ten thousand. Are we okay to continue trying to put seventy or eighty thousand a year from general funded to water? I'm just asking. And I know we had talked about thirty and thirty-five and thirty-five, just split it over three years, is this year one we're looking at, Mike? Is there a year two coming?
Yeah, this would be your first year, and we give, you have the second option, we did that, the ready to serve fee, maybe you can look at that option also.
Yeah, I just said you move on, I wanted you to think about, do we want to continue to fund water at seventy or eighty thousand a year when everything else is frail and anemic? Because we're doing that one move, I'm just asking. So think about it, because we've got to get back to that tonight, I think.
So when I, look at that development, what we call a ready to serve fire, ready to serve fee, in addition to that cost per thousand gallons. Current water rate is eight twenty, so I kept it right at that eight twenty. And I added a ten dollar every two months, so you say a five dollar a month, we're going to call that a ready to serve fee, that would be for a homeowner, pay five dollars a month, or ten dollars every two months, in addition to the current eight twenty that they're currently paying. We're still collecting the exact same amount of money, but we're just changing how we collect it, now we're going to collect some, guarantee upfront. If you use any water or not, you're going to pay the ready to serve fee, and then you still continue to pay the eight twenty, which is what the current rate rate is per thousand gallons, as you use it. And then that ten dollars, again, that, that varies, the larger the water meter is, the higher that rate goes. So, this is more of a, of a standard practice across the state of Michigan, just because we guarantee some revenue in there. Doesn't mean you guys have to do it, it was just, it was just an option, the way to keep that cost per thousand gallons the same. I'm not recommending or suggesting anything, I'm just kind of giving you guys, I got the two options tonight, and. You guys think about it.
So you're saying that the ten dollars, you have two months versus three?
Yeah, we two months, yeah. So we, we just chop that in half, right up there, here's that eight twenty. Without it, with zero capital, the ready to serve charge would be, let's round it off to six dollars. And then I got that twenty thousand for the capital, so that's X four, so right there is your bare minimum. Eight twenty and let's say six dollars are ready to serve, if you chose that option. And then you could do again whatever you want with that capital, whether you want to fund twenty thousand or a half, whatever. That's your, that's your number you can play with, but that five ninety-three and the eight twenty, that's just where you're at, just to, just to break even right there. Based on an adopted budget that you got there.
I had suggested sixty days instead of ninety days, because the size of the bill's going to go up, it might be easier with a high amount of seniors and fixed aid couples we have, to give them a bill more often than a bigger bill. And if anybody out there is disagreeing, please speak, but I'm trying to keep your interests at heart here. But at the same time, folks, we got a hundred and forty-one thousand state revenue sharing, if this isn't done and resolved completely to their satisfaction by March first, we're back to the crisis mode we were in December about losing money if we didn't get the audit done. So I'm really hoping we can get this skid tonight without a big ruckus. But we have to pay to maintain our system, folks, it's falling apart, we have no money in the bank to take care of it. So as I said, I'd come help be your manager, and some of these changes wouldn't be easy, this is going to be one of the hardest ones we see in twenty twenty right here.
We've got a question for Don, how many water mains did we have to repair this past, not this year, but this past?
Well, not the year we're in, but in twenty eighteen, or twenty nineteen, no, sorry, twenty eighteen. I can't say multiple, but it's residents from Jennings Street, no. That was our issue, was Jennings Street, it was the same water line, but we had eight breaks on that line. And that is something that we need to look at seriously, because again, you have now eight different, well, sixteen different seams.
One block needs plastic pipe, you don't have the money to change it.
And again, you're looking at probably, for one block, a hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars to do that. And, it's also a four inch main, and right, I'm sorry, George, correct me, wasn't that a four inch that we did?
Yes, correct, it was.
And, and.
At the time we were doing repairs, we put a control valve.
Right. Correct, and.
Put a new line in.
Yeah.
At a bare minimum, we want to put in, I believe, a six inch.
Right, the state is requiring at least six inches now.
And I'm going to tell you, eight.
Right, it's the best policy.
You got to have eight, you got sprinklers back there, especially that part of town.
And you have Northern Tube right there, the business that needs a sprinkler system.
So we really need to be putting eight inch in, pretty much anytime we open the hole and change, what do we do?
So I mean, realistically, we had basically one main break, but.
But we have several.
And then as, as Mike alluded to, and our guys have been awesome in trying to do this, but again, we, and Bob mentioned, we have water valves that haven't been exercised the way they should have been. And so that was an issue when we had the break on Jennings Street. We couldn't get valves to shut off, or we couldn't get them to open back up, they were breaking, so we, you know, we're trying to get a system in place to exercise valves, and also start replacing these valves, and again, that's not a cheap endeavor. I, I'm sorry, I know it's a gloomy picture, but there's no way to wrap it up pretty.
The only good news for the council and the community is, this is a state mandate. What Flit went through is driving this across the whole state. So, what they're telling people like Mike, and they're telling people like me, is, we've got to not only have enough money to maintain our system, but have money in the bank to fix our system, but over the course of fifty years, we should be able to replace most of it. Again, we're not bringing this up to be stakers or hard time, but again, if we want things to get better, the road is going to be bumpy sometimes, so this is a bump, and a mountain we need to climb together. So the state has forced us to do this, but at the same time, our water fund's broke, and we have issues. That particular block's got about twenty stainless steel bandages on it. If you went from here to the road, that would be about how long that stretch is. That's beyond acceptable, and it's beyond what I think is acceptable. So we've got to make some changes, the reason every other month, instead of every third month, is try and keep the bill about the same amount. It's going to come a little more often, but we, we really don't have a choice. They're going to start taking our revenue sharing, folks, that's our operational money, they're going to close this down if we don't get our butt gear, get things straightened out, so. I said I'd come and help you, and I'm here saying, we need to work with Mike, and we need to have a plan tonight before we leave, if we got to be here till ten o'clock, we got to have a plan when we leave tonight. This has got to stop, it's broken, and we got to stop dragging that broken down the road. So I know I've spoken too much, but you got to hear me, we need your help, we have to fix this. You have to.
Yes, sir. Hi, my name is Paul Herbert, I live right here in town, as do quite a few of these folks. I am one of the retirees, so obviously money is pretty much a, much a thing with us. As far as this, I guess what I'm looking for, I don't hear real well, okay? So, a lot of your conversation was, was kind of for me, that was, that was about the extent of it. What I'm curious about is, bottom line, are we looking at a raise in the water bill?
Yes, sir.
So if we're looking at a raise in a water bill, I guess I'd like to know what the, what the level that we're looking at is. Two, I think there's a long range plan somewhere in the works as far as both water and sewer, within the city of Pinconning. I'd like to know what the impact of this has on that. If, in fact, we're going to be supplying water to the marijuana folks out here on Seven Mile, that's not part of the plan, so we're not going to see any increase in usage, correct?
Right.
Only with development in town, and we'll be seeking some of that in the near future, we're already having meetings this week, or last week.
So, what we got there basically is a current term problem with money. We don't have enough to make, make the state allocation, is that correct?
Yeah, it's a long-term problem that we don't have money, it's a twenty-year thing that we're trying to fix.
Now, everybody's got a problem with money. I'm sorry, I speak for too many people here, problems.
You're retired, you can say.
Nobody else has. I guess, that's what we're looking at, what we look at is a straight up statement that says, hey, here's how much money we need, here's how much you're paying now, here's what our shortfall is, here's how we solve that problem. That, at least that would, that would benefit me personally.
We're working in that direction, and part of the discussion tonight has been, let's go to a sixty-day billing, so the size would stay about the same.
Well, I gather that.
Over the course of a three-year period, we're looking at thirty dollars for a quarter, based on ready to serve fees, and just to break even. I think we need to do a little better just break even, we have a skeleton crew, we're talking about having to lay people off again. So I'm just thinking out loud, it'd really be nice to turn this around, we got to have a clerk and a treasurer and a manager, it'd be nice to have some policemen, it'd be nice to have somebody to help us with water and sewer and mowing.
Well, everybody within town right now is, is paying an assessment on the sewage. And after thirty years, this man has given us some pretty darn good water, it's, it's.
Yeah, George was out pumping and working hard on generators last week and fighting the rain as well, we got issues with it flow, our it flows off the chart.
I guess what might come into play is what the retirement level is on the debt for the sewage plant, and where we are there. I mean, are we looking at a lifetime of paying for the, for the sewage assessment?
Gadget on the table, and they were about halfway through a forty-year debt, there were some good questions from the council about that the last couple of days. Again, we're looking at going from three months to two, so your bill's not more. It's people like you that we exactly have in mind when we're making that change. We don't want to give you a bigger bill, we want to leave it low, but we're going to have to give you a bill more often, and we're going to try and keep it about the same size. That's the goal, and feel free to sit up front, we want you to hear.
Where are we with the technology on the sewage plant, at some point, that's a question I'd like to know.
It's, it's, needs help, and George is probably most qualified for that, about an hour sermon there, I think, sermon.
We started that conversation, but I started it too late.
We're, we're, we're going to go for thirty more years.
Alright.
So you said there was a third option?
No. There was a two, so we, we just to give, we're going to do the two-month billing, right? That was in the give, and you had the two options, either just a straight cost per thousand gallons like you have, or we would do cost per thousand gallons, and a ready to serve. Those are the two options. Yeah, and you was doing two-month billing, that was just kind of a give. Deal with it.
We're already doing a ready to serve.
Right, that's, that retirement, to cover the bonds.
The mayor's asked me to make a point here with everybody, dude, give me a second. Part of the reason that I feel so strongly about fixing our water fund is that when I came here about six weeks ago to help you, is that you have about eight million dollar grant on the table to get water and sewer straightened out in our city. Our water fund is in the deficit, it's not going to make it to June the way we're going. So just let me paint that, and again, there's a hundred and forty-one thousand revenue sharing that we could lose come March first if we don't get this fixed. So please bear with us, we're trying to do this as painlessly as we can, but we have to save our water system, and we have to save our city. So, please, please, everybody work with us, and Mike, thank you, I know it's a lot of work, and I appreciate what you're doing, and your leadership helped us with this tough issue.
So, you guys, by March first, you got to get a, and if, this got to be done by March first and submitted to the DEQ or the state, right? If you choose that option, or just a straight cost per thousand gallons, you got to do one or the other. Otherwise, they're going to send you a second notice, it's going to be a violation, and then.
There goes some money, and there goes more money.
You can do whatever you want to do, you can argue with them while you want, just between you and them, but I'm out of the picture at that point, it's just between you and them at that point.
Most communities have a small rate of serve fee and a consumption fee, it appears the five ninety-three and eight twenty is probably our best move, could you recap that for us a little bit?
The five ninety-three is that, you pay that every two months, so it's three dollars a month, which is nothing, and then your water would stay the same. But that, that's covered just your budget, there's not, there's not a penny in there for contingency, or to fix a water main, to do anything, that's just normal day-to-day operational expenses.
That seventy-eight thousand still has to go, right?
That includes the seventy-eight thousand from your general fund, yeah. So if you want to fix some water mains, there's, that's where the cost right there, that's your water main. Repair project, or putting some money inside to grow your thirty-seven thousand dollars that you've got in the bank, or it's probably not thirty-seven thousand today, in the negative today, right? So you're below zero. So this, and again, the twenties, that's not like you're rolling in the dough when you're going to get wealthy, it's just kind of a minnow. But, but again, that's what you got to play with, is that, that twenty right there. You could do this over, maybe if you start here, and in the next couple of years, you build that capital up a little bit, so the rates go up a little bit over a multiple-year period. The state would accept that because you have a plan, you have this plan in place, and this is a plan, and that's what we're doing. And then they can argue with you if they like your plan. Make sense, everybody over there, you guys, looking alright? You like the, the ready to serve and the cost, you want just a straight cost per thousand gallons?
So just, just to recap, just, just to break even, we have to raise them to fourteen dollars and thirteen cents.
Basically, three dollars about the rate of serve on top of what we're charging now, for year one.
We'd be up to the eighteen twenty at the bottom.
When you say eighteen twenty, I follow eighteen twenty. Yeah, sorry, for your first thousand gallons. For one thousand gallons, yes, yeah, you pay ten, then your very thousand, you pay eight twenty.
Just to clarify here and make sure I understand. Our current rate is eight twenty per thousand.
Yes.
We can keep that eight twenty per thousand. So whatever rate, or whatever usage we're paying, over the course of a year is not going to change, so that amount that we pay for water would not change. It would be billed every two months instead of three. And we would pay ten dollars every two months, or five dollars a month.
Yeah.
So essentially, for five dollars a month, per bill, we can, we can do this and make everything at least balanced and work.
Move to higher ground. Direction.
Yeah, move to higher ground, that's correct.
Yeah.
That's what we need.
I think that's what everybody out here is really wanting to hear.
Five dollars a month.
Okay, our rates don't go up for the water, we pay five dollars a month for this ready to serve fee, we pay it every other month, but it's five dollars a month.
Yeah, yes.
But you have year two and year three, that might be four dollars a month. But it's a three-year thing, and we are about two years behind already, so.
I just would like to clarify, the eight twenty is what we're paying with the rate increase from the county, so if the county was to increase, then that eight twenty would increase.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a pass-through, there's no mark up there, right.
So that's 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 a separate topic a little bit though, yeah.
Well, I just wanted to make sure he understands.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not it's not five dollars and so much cents per bill. It's gonna be that per thousand gallons of water.
No, your water cost will never is. Water cost will stay the same for now, eight twenty, and then you're gonna pay a five-dollar-a-month fee whether you use any water or whether you use any gallons of water. It's a five-dollar-a-month fee, no matter how much water you use. Now, five-dollar-a-month fee is gonna increase if you if you have a two-inch meter or a three-inch water meter. It's gonna increase. But for a homeowner, that's where it's at right there. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, yep.
Is that on top of the, because we already pay ten dollars now, I think every three months, right, just to have the service?
That's for the base rate. That's tied to the sewer as part of our bonds. That would stay there. That would be different.
One thing I'm just a little confused on is the hydrant rental is already in our budget. Where does that question go? We're going to add back into the water.
So I've got the hydrant rentals gonna lower the rates. I got the seventy-eight thousand dollars we applied in there and it keeps the rates down. That lowers the that rate of serve charge by two dollars and lowers the cost per thousand gallons by about two dollars eighty-seven cents, so.
At tad we're whole. At five eighty-three, we're not. That's the ready-to-serve. At three a month, we're not whole. At five dollars a month, we're whole.
The seventy-eight thousand is already in our.
That goes away at five dollars a month, that big transfer.
Does it?
Yeah, it does. It goes away. Yep.
What is it? The question you're not, so the seventy-eight thousand, if it's already applied in here, those rates include the seventy-eight thousand?
That's what I'm saying, that's.
It's already included in our.
Yeah.
Year budget, uh, include that.
As a revenue source, yes, yes. So I include it as a revenue source here. That's gonna lower our water rates.
So if we were to do away with the seventy-eight thousand, that would increase those base rates in that?
Oh, it increases by two dollars and the water cost of water would jump up to eleven dollars.
I think I'm right. Mike, at ten, it goes away at five eighty-three. That seventy-eight still there?
Pardon me?
At ten dollars, rate of serve fee or the five dollars a month, does that seventy-eight thousand go away?
Seventy's in there all the way.
No, it's still there.
So what's the difference between the five ninety-three and the ten?
Five ninety-three has no capital. That's just your bare-bones budget and then we add four dollars to cover our capital costs, puts us up to ten. So five ninety-three is just daily O M expenses. And there and there and there's nothing extra on there. And then if you wanna put some capital, like after twenty thousand, basically it costs about four dollars. You know, uh, for that capital adds it to that ten, so. So that there's there there's your minimum you have to adopt and then you go have some capital, like a four dollars, you generate twenty grand a year capital there.
So you're saying prior years that hydrant rental fee wasn't in the water fund or was it in the general fund?
It's a legal requirement that you have a hydrant rental line in your general fund to water. It's required by law that you transfer at least five thousand from general to water for a community our size. That's a Biller Campfield interpretation a couple of years ago. Uh, but at seventy-five thousand, Brian, we've got, you know, basically a full-time employee. Right? We're moving out of general fund to water every year. We're struggling with staffing and one-on-one expenses at some point. I guess kind of what I'm thinking, Mike, is if if we left the ten-dollar ready-to-serve and we left the eight twenty where it was at and we halved the capital, our seventy-eight thousand would come down about ten grand.
Yep.
That might be where we start. That might be where we start year one. We reduce the transfer by ten. We put ten thousand away for emergencies. We hope we have a good year and get a couple of years of that put in there. And then we use the general fund as a backstop like you have, but if some bad happens in the first couple of years. So I'll make that in form of a recommendation.
You have a question, Larry?
Yeah, I apologize for being abusive, but that's kind of how I am. Uh, two things. One, uh, if we were to change to a two-month or bimonthly system from a quarterly system, does that affect our budgeting? And is there any requirement as far as the collection process? Does it cost us more to do that? Does it not cost us more to do that?
Yeah, I've got a pair of two sets of water bills, so yeah, there's probably a hundred-dollar difference on the operational side. But again, the goal is not to give you a great big bill every three months. The goal was to kind of keep it more even by breaking it into smaller pieces.
Well, number two on my agenda was old folks like me, and I are the old folks. Have a tendency to, uh, look at change as not necessarily being a good thing. So if you go to a two-month system, there's gonna be folks saying, boy, I slipped it in under the rug. If you stick with the three months, all you gotta deal with is the rate increase, which is the five dollars per month or the fifteen dollars per quarter. As opposed to people saying, wow, I wonder what the hell they're doing with their money this time. Okay?
That makes sense.
I get why.
I I would say that five dollars every, just leave it at the three months and just put the five dollars, it's an extra fifteen dollars on top of your base rate that you're.
I'm good with that. Just understand that other communities with low income like Saginaw went to a monthly billing about ten or twelve years ago. So that was part of their thinking was that maybe it'd be easier if you came in smaller pieces because of the size of the raise. But I'm good with what you guys are talking about. It's really up to the customers.
We'll leave it at the three months and just put.
He's got a call on you, ma'am. I'm sorry. Chair's got a call.
Pardon me?
The lady in the back has her hand up.
Oh, Mrs. L.
Mr. Edison's got a call on him. I can't.
To me, being billed every other month is a pain in the butt. I'm sorry in a way to say it, but you know what? You got bills coming in. You don't wanna have to, it's like it's here again. I would much rather pay a better, a bigger bill quarterly and be done with it, you know? It's just just it and it's all paperwork for you guys.
It's easier for us to send them every three months.
Where it makes any sense to be billed every other month.
It's easier for us to leave it.
That's my opinion.
Thanks.
John, I have a question. How many, I don't know if you can answer this. How many bills are unpaid?
When we get to, like tomorrow, sending out the penalties, usually we're between a hundred and eighty and two hundred bills.
Wow. And so that extra, call it fifteen dollars is likely gonna make that increase.
I would expect to see some increase.
Who picks up the slack?
As you you mean the unpaid? So.
Right.
Well, right. And if the bill goes unpaid, we have the right to put it on the tax bill so that when it goes on they pay through their taxes, we do have a method to recoup that.
Sorry, I have it. Three months is harder for some.
So it's to me something to consider for two-month billing. I know that's a change. But fifteen dollars to a low-income family could be a lot. I don't know.
I I understand and, you know, there's no one right way, because everyone has different needs. Um, we do encourage and like you say, I life is just hard in general. We're all feeling financial pinch. You know, it's not like anyone just, but they are, our residents are more than welcome at any time to come in and put money down on their account to pay ahead. We encourage that. Um, you know, and again, I know it's difficult. We've had some people that come in at the end of the week and they're like, I had an extra two dollars, and they just come in and pay that. We don't have a set minimum. We'll take it. We'll give you a receipt when you get your bill. It's gonna show the negative amounts of what you've paid ahead. And we do have generally ten to fifteen people that will pay monthly, not usually weekly, but once a month they'll come in and put money down. So that lessens the burden when they get that bill in three months. So and again, like you're saying, and and some of the residents, to read every other month. Again, you're increasing time that the guys have to be out reading, the time that Amy and I spend checking that everything is correct in the system, getting the bills out, the postage, you know, you're increasing that. Um, but Councilman Saha was very proactive for us and went after a distressed city grant. I we don't know yet if we will get it. Um, if we are able to get that, it would allow us to buy new meters and a new system. Where if we were lucky enough that we would install an antenna on the building and we could do real-time check-in if someone has, you know, they're using a lot of water that we can see what's going on. That would allow us to bill monthly where we're saving on manpower. You're still having the increase in the paper, to send the bill and the postage, but we wouldn't need a person with boots on the pavement reading. We could do that from, but these are all things that may or may not happen and we can't count on that. But if that was to happen, it would certainly ease that process of being able to do that.
So just just a cap, I'm pretty certain it satisfies the state. Uh, we should be at eight twenty or in the fight out the month. For your service, that combination.
Eight twenty, five ninety-three, with the seventy-eight from the general fund.
But the eight twenty and the ready-to-serve charge, if we want that ready-to-serve charge, it'd be five bucks a month.
If you if you if you put some capital in there, yeah, yeah, you you probably need to. I mean, I've got another city that talked about setting in with a zero capital and I mentioned that to the state and they said, oh, oh, don't even think about it. We're gonna reject it and they're gonna be in violation immediately. You need something in there, whether you I don't know what you need, Dave, but yeah, maybe, again, between you and the state is what they need to be acceptable, but I know if you put zero, they're gonna they're gonna pay a visit.
And like Bob said, we're jeopardizing our revenue sharing and I just would like to remind you that um, when I was in Bob's seat, remember, I had to do corrective action plans to the state two years in a row because of our water and sewer issue. And they're not gonna keep doing that for us.
So and you guys sat through the audit meetings. You know where we're at. It's not a great place. So I'm gonna, again, I'd like to make the recommendation. We can, Mike, it is recommendation. We start year one at ten and eight twenty. What's your two and three look like, sir?
What's your, you're saying that five dollars a month would be, if we stuck with a quarterly billing, would be fifteen, are you thinking?
Mm-hmm, and eighteen twenty.
Yeah, okay.
Probably the least painful, what I'm hearing both from the audience and council.
So the 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 next couple of years, you got some options. Um, I think what you probably wanna do, I know the state within the next again, eleven months is gonna come back and say they want this updated. Isn't that just to kind of request that every city just get a mission against be updated by, I think, January first. They want that to include any lead and copper dealings or water replacements, so probably whatever you adopt today, just know that within the twelve months, you're gonna be updating it again. And probably gonna go higher than based on if they find any of the lead goose necks or if they're work ever, any lead goose necks, maybe replacing some service lines. Uh, some of the water mains, like that kind of stuff, so it's probably just a starting point where you're at. So probably whatever you adopt today, what I would tell everybody is whether the state requests it or not, probably every year, every other year, probably every year for you guys, because you're in such a critical mode. Wanna come back and just do the evaluation, just to keep your thumb on it, just to make sure nothing changed. If something did change, direct the run on it. Whether it's myself or anybody else, but you probably want, if you had a half million dollars in the bank, you could probably go a couple of years, but but you don't. So you guys probably wanna just keep your thumb on it every year, just review the process. Anything change? We have any data? Do we find any new, uh, do we find some lead goose necks and, you know, are there any water mains or what has changed? And just keep our thumb on it. You kind of hold that to your customers just to say, let's go and I, let's just find out to making sure we're 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 planning to the best of our ability, just just for their sake out there.
Is there is there state grants out there for the like the lead necks and all that to take care of that?
You know, there, uh, and right now, there's very few grants. There's some loan forgiveness grants they're calling them through the state of Michigan. Um, but it right now, every city in the state of Michigan is going for them because every city's got the lead goose necks, so I don't know how far they're gonna go. But they're 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 not calling it a grant. They're calling it a loan forgiveness out there right now on some of the impoverished, lower-income communities. So I guess, yes, some. Is there any thoughts or issues as the council members?
Yeah, see, my question is, is you know, somebody who's on the home come, if it's only going up to five dollars a month, I could I can do that and my money come. But my issue comes in big time was every time we go in the hole, we ask the people for more money. And some are willing to do it, but there is a lot of people that are gonna be at the threshold where they say, okay, I can't do that. I'm gonna have to find a place outside the city. And when we get when we get out of the hole, they get nothing to show for it, except we're not bugging them for more money.
Pin County is not unique to this. I mean, every, you get eight hundred and ninety public water communities in Michigan going through this exact thing and just the third council meeting with, but it's the third third council meeting I've done this month, unfortunately, and it's the same everywhere I go. It's states requiring communities to become self-sufficient in your water system and just pay for what you got. And if that forces somebody to to choose between having water and sewer or a cellphone, you'd have to make a choice. That's you can move to the country, but to sell your house for fifteen dollars a month or a quarter, five dollars a month, that doesn't seem logical. So I guess you guys are not alone. Everybody's feeling this. Every every city in the state is.
Any other questions from anybody? Deal with this right now or do we?
Yes, please.
We need to.
I made a recommendation, fifty dollars quarter rate of serve at eight twenty month charge for year one. I think I'm on track.
Bay County raises that rate, you guys have to adjust.
Yeah, the pass-throughs would go based on an ordinance you have in place, if that would happen again, but they just raised it, so I don't see it doing again anytime soon.
Yeah.
But yeah, that'd be my recommendation. We go to fifteen, a quarter rate of serve at eight twenty. Pass-through to the county.
So that fifteen is for the three-quarters homeowners that get the cost increases for the larger customers?
That's correct.
Yeah. The, um, wanna see those larger rates?
Sure.
That's good.
Laundromat, car wash.
So here's the, um, so you say, how how much do we charge those larger-metre people? So here's the velocity behind it. Based on the size of that line, math and hydraulically, if you double the size of the pipe, you quadruple the amount of water you get through it. So if I got a three-quarters pipe like most of your homeowners have, and you go to a one-and-a-half-inch pipe, I get four times your water for that one-and-a-half-inch pipe. Meaning they're taking up four and a half, basically four and a half homes, right? So you charge them four times what a three-quarter inch person pays. So the rate for those larger meters is just a math and hydraulics calculation based on the size of that pipe. The square inches of the pipe diameter equals how much water you get through there. So that's the that's the that's the ratio we're gonna look at up here. So right here we go. So here's that, um, the ratios. So that three-quarters pays it, it'll be fifteen. But the one inch, if it was ten, so they would jump to that, so. There's that eight and a half, it's where you're at, you're ten. It's gonna go up and we'll we'll adjust it with that fifteen per quarter up and make that calculation, make that happen there. But it's just directly a math and hydraulic calculation based on the pipe size. Those larger customers are taking the capacity of your system. If you have too much capacity, now you need another larger water line from Bay County. The larger water towers are grabbing across to your system, the fire suppression, a lot of other things, so you charge them according because if you weren't fighting fighting fires, all your water lines could be could be smaller, but those larger buildings are are costing you to increase the water line size overall across your system. So that's a theory to charge those larger people a higher fee based on, um, on the size of a of a line going into that building. So I'll run that calculation and say that, um, coordinates that every six month or every every two months and we'll get those exact figures down there.
So you're saying from like a half-inch line to an inch line would be five to ten, yours are based on?
Well, it's it's just that if you double the size of the line, it goes up by four times the flow rate, or the rate would go by four times. And I, like I say, I kind of gotta mess up because we're doing six months versus every three months. So I guess if you were to adopt something, you would say it's fifteen dollars, we'll call it, the official term would be per REU, per residential household. Those larger meters will do the calculation to see how many residential houses that a larger meter is. So you would say fifteen dollars per REU, we'll set your ordinance up that, everything's based on, on, on that ratio there.
Based on this conversation recommendation, I'd make a motion to, uh. Adopt new water rates at fifteen dollars per quarter per REU. And commodity rate at eight dollars and twenty cents per thousand gallons of usage.
I'll support that.
We're gonna have to craft it into a resolution, so I've gotta ask the, take a roll call of this one.
Councilman Kinney?
No.
Councilwoman Betcher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coier? Oh, I'm sorry, sir, I forgot, you had to ask for a discussion.
I was thinking what all they said, but, uh. Okay, we have a motion to adopt. The waters. Ready. Assessment?
Sure.
With, uh, the second. Any discussion?
Well, like I said before, you know, we can't, beginning, and it's only five dollars now, but later on, what if it's like. Another five dollars, another five dollars here and there. And like you said, well, why would somebody move over for fifteen dollars or twenty dollars, well, I'm a renter, so if it's cheaper for me to like someplace south where there's no water bill. Or a water bill's cheaper, I'd pick my stuff and go. And there are people who are going now, who have to get help for their bill as it is. And that's gonna increase more people who want to get help. What's this gonna put the strain on, on, on the resources, cause there's, God, library shows up. And, but they're only paying a hundred dollars in the bill, and so what happens, if they get over the hundred dollars and they're still short on it. Then you've just wasted a hundred dollars that they put into it, and they're gonna get shut off anyway.
The only problem we have is we, we have to do something, there's no. We can't leave it the way it is. We have, there's gotta be an increase.
Yeah, I understand that, but. It's, it's just disappointing because we just got done increasing the property taxes and reassessed everything, so they got, the health property owners got that to deal with. And every, I mean, it seems like every time we turn around, the city's getting beat down because the citizens are like, oh, hey. Gee, you know, they're gonna keep taking more money from us. And they can't, you know, it's just, it's just a vicious cycle to where it's gonna get quite, what's me like California, people are just gonna start leaving and then. It'll be the last one turning the lights out.
What would you suggest that the city does then, Chris?
Well, my suggestion would be there's. Other things we can do, like. Um. You know, like we, like, uh, I brought it before. You know, we had the cheese festival, could bring in some money, we did, right, you know, put the beer cans back up. And because that'll be less coming out of the budget. Cause right now, every, this, this come out of budget and we're going in the hole, that's the way it is. And either way. And plus, my, my thinking was, I put two, is that. This, this revenue we got coming, yeah, it's nice. But either way, I don't see how we're gonna keep the residents from taking more money out of the pot. And that's my big concern there is, what's coming out of the pot?
Any other discussion? Roll call.
So, Councilman Kinney?
No.
Councilwoman Betcher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coier?
Yes.
Councilman Saha?
Yes.
Councilman LaPorte, or Councilwoman, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Gibson?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Motion carried.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you. Mike has been here since one o'clock today.
And we started having conversations around the eighteenth of December, at least I started leaving him messages that we needed to talk, cause I got this was gonna be hard.
Like he said, he's not.
Thank you, everybody, for your patience and understanding, as we worked through an issue that needed to be fixed.
Well, I'll change that to a quarterly billing, email you guys a copy.
Thank you.
And then I'll inform that in the resolution.
Yeah, you have the template too, we need.
Yeah, yeah.
Send that over, cause you just get to put in that format, thank you. You're awesome, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Safe travels.
All the way to Cadillac, please be careful.
Well, he's waiting for tonight for the, he has to manage a meeting tomorrow unfortunately. Get this out of your way, you're ahead of him.
Okay. Moving on. The approval of the consent agenda.
I make motion to approve of the consent agenda.
I'll support.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda and second it. Any discussion here?
Just, uh. Put the fact where the account, the bills are, sixteen thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Committee reports, city manager, Mr. Muffet.
It's in the packet, you got an extra email done, it's off on Friday about the presentation tonight. Just a lot going on, busy, lots to do, have a meeting tomorrow with the shadow on refurbishing. Help me.
Whispering Pines.
Whispering Pines, so I've got the mayor and Brian. And councilwoman Rebecca Coier here tomorrow to meet with them at ten o'clock, I expect that to be back here. Uh, for vote next month, I expect a couple other pilot housing type projects before the end of the calendar year. And, uh, I know Brian and the mayor and Dawn have been helping me quite a bit, I've had a couple meetings with those folks already, so we'll have a little half hour meeting tomorrow. Kinda get all the questions around the table answered, so we come in here next month and present it to you kind of as a team, hopefully support this rehab project. Should be cost neutral, the other projects covered should be cost. Should affect the revenue in a good way, this will be budget neutral, but we're gonna get those units fixed up, we're gonna get better screening, better management over there, so. All those things will help us. Aside of that, still kinda learning my way around, would like to encourage you guys that haven't been in to meet with me, please do. I know, Lorsy, you got a new job, so I'll work with the aqua bed at seven thirty or whatever you need me to do, or I'll stay after, I just need a little heads up with the dog. He's got about a ten hour limit, so. It's a pleasure to be here and lots to do, but look forward to getting to know you guys and just keep the legs moving ahead.
I'm just gonna ask at this time, uh, we've been here an hour and a half. Anybody want to take a break, need a break? We'll do ten minutes if we need, I see folks getting up, maybe they need to stretch, reach the restroom, so. Uh, what's your call, a ten minute break or keep on going? Okay, we'll keep on going. City services, uh, chairperson report.
Uh, nothing to report at this time.
Finance and personnel, uh, chairman Saha.
Uh, no meeting, nothing to report.
Public safety, chairman Coier.
No meeting, nothing to report.
Park and recreation, chairman Ford.
No meeting at this time, hopefully next month, nothing to report.
Downtown development, DDA chairman. We got this council person, Saha.
Uh, yeah, we had a, a meeting, basically we get the full discussion, we're done, we know all the plan, which we want to know. That's what I could report. Yeah, we've looked through it, so.
Arguments, chairman Betcher.
Uh, nothing to report.
Fire, myself, we have a fire board meeting tomorrow evening at six thirty, township, in our township hall. MBA, myself, uh, have nothing to report at this time. Especially them, chairman LaPorte.
Uh, we haven't had a second meeting, so I'm not gonna report at this time.
Thank you. Uh, who was the, uh, I'm doing this business.
No, I think we'll.
We have a meeting in the morning, yeah, it's, it's not, it's not a new project, this is Whispering Pine redevelopment, there'll be a plan working with us later in the year. We do get a housing study from this application, so certainly we'll get a copy and. Share it, hopefully share some insights from it, should identify needs, other needs in our community as it pertains to housing.
Uh, the DDA staffing contract handles?
Uh, that's just the contract we have to get in place and try to work with the city manager to formulate that. So we can incorporate into our, do all that plan, the permits with the state, this could have been. Done, we have the, uh, contract, it's been, um. Review by both legal councils, so, uh, it's pretty well, we're ready to go, we just have to incorporate some figures in there. Hopefully we can bring that to.
Whenever you're ready.
Counsel next month or something.
Volunteer policy?
Chris?
Oh, well, um, city manager gave me a copy from another city. And we discussed it, and I had a couple issues with it, but it's a pretty good policy, we adopted it. Um, I don't know if you gave a.
I, it hasn't gone out, I've got another one coming, so I think we'll have probably something for you to vote on next month, I would think, we're gonna get this done, aren't we, Chris? Probably time to have good, so we'll have something for you to vote on that next time, we're gonna have a couple of them, we'll lay them side by side and craft one for us. Thank you, Chris.
Social media, also one stop.
Yeah, our last, uh, last meeting, uh, city manager had the, uh, plan titles to, uh, the new city manager, uh, we did not adopt, uh, city manager to be a social media manager also. So I'd like to have that discussion and also throw out another idea of where we have been in the past is to have our. Consultant or contractor, um. Actually, she, uh, her firm designs the posts that are used on the DDA, um, Facebook page. And to keep that, uh, structure in place where, um, she did, does the post, she passes by. A committee of, uh. DDA folks, which is myself, Josh Clay and Jeanette Marks. All, every post goes to us for approval and also Don, as the city manager, was part of that, um, committee and, and authority and approval structure. So I'd just like to make that recommendation to either. At the recommendation of a new city manager, whether you like that assignment as official manager or.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll accept the assignment, we'll work together, that's probably best that way, so I'm good with that, so thank you.
Just keeping the same structure.
I'll need a little orientation, probably five minutes from you and about ten from Dawn, but yeah, I'm more than willing to join that committee and I get how important that is.
So just make the recommendation to, uh, um. Assign a social media, media manager to, uh, um, Mr. Muffet, current city manager, as part of the motion.
So Bob hasn't seen that, but I, I believe we're safe in that it already spelled out that the city manager would be the one, so.
Default.
Right, so.
But we had, we had made all the assignments.
That's part of what I did on Friday, for real, most of that.
Right, no, I just wasn't sure if they wanted to do a formal motion or just operate under that we already had the city manager as the. Pointless person.
So do you support that?
I, I made a motion.
Yeah, I'll support.
We have a motion to make city manager, Mr. Muffet, the social media manager. And supported. I'm in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? So, uh, my motion carried. Northern Bay ambulance special assessment. We've been three months talking about it. I talked with Mr. Muffet about it. We need, we need to, uh, do something with it, I talked with. I sit on the board and, uh, councilwoman. Ford sits on the board, I asked her her thoughts. There's a. There's a new rate for this coming up year. Which is thirty-two thirty per partial. Now, Northern Bay ambulance operates with the city, with the township, with Fraser Township, with Garfield Township. With Mount Forest Township and Gibson Township. All these folks that own property. Is paying thirty-two thirty this year to have ambulance service. The question is, in the city of Pincoming. Where we have. Multi-unit complexes. I'll just say like Whispering Pines sets on two partials. They're charged thirty-two thirty for two partials. The recommendation is that these multi-unit. Uh, places. Get assessed equally as each unit. So, if you have sixty units over there. They'll be assessed the thirty-two thirty per the sixty units. Everyone else is being assessed that, so. It's only fair that we all be assessed that. So, as I stated, we've dealt with this for about two, three months now. I need, I would like the recommendation or something from my council, whether to move forward. So, we have something to take to the next Northern Bay ambulance briefing for.
I've got a question, Dennis, how, how much a month did you say that would be?
It was like, uh, two dollars and ninety cents a month.
That's right, so in essence, it would cost each unit two dollars and ninety cents?
Correct.
A month. For this. Assessment.
What, Bob, do you know other cities, what they do with multi-family complexes?
I have never seen a tax assessed this way, so I've been backing up every time I've heard about it. I had suggested, and I don't know even what your thoughts are, but we're paying about thirty thousand dollars a year for medical roads through our fire department. Would some of that money be better suited over here, could the fire department not be making all those medical roads? Or would it be best to have it ordered to. Or would it be best to have an ordinance, uh, if anybody goes over four or five runs a year, they pay a hundred fifty dollars a run more? Does that fix the Whispering Pines lawsuit? I don't know. I know some of you and the mayor have been involved with the fire board here for a lot longer than I have, which has just been one meeting so far. I don't understand it, but I do believe it's legal, do I think it's fair? I don't know. I think if we wrote it and the mayors heard this, this is new, if there was an ordinance written that said, everybody pays a hundred fifty dollars a run after the first buy per calendar year, no matter who you are. This probably fixes that problem, it may not fix the flooding unless we restructure our fire department, get them out of, out of the runs. Matt's standing at the back, and I'm gonna pick on him a little bit, he just recently passed the first responders test, he went took it out his own. And Don's worked with him. Don's worked with him to get a grant application together for the bank that he needs. I'm just saying, there's lots of ways to do this, and I certainly want to support things that were in process when I got here, this is legal. So it's okay to move that ahead if that's what you want, I don't know if the ordinance would be better, rework with the fire department would be better. Would seem if we have an ambulance company out there ready to make the roads, and one of our guys is ready to jump in if they're busy. I think that's not a bad place to be, how we pay for it, I guess is part of it, again, I'm not trying to steal any thunder, what he's proposing will work. I'm not a successor, I don't totally understand it, but I do believe it's legal what he's going about. Guess what my concern was, if you got the mother-in-law living in apartment over the garage, do you pay another thirty-two fifty? Well, if you go that way, yeah, you do. Six of one, half a dozen of the other, I think the goal is to have paid on-call firemen, and I know we need it, how do we pay for it? Do we say we're gonna restructure our money there to there, or we gotta raise new money, or we gotta put in an ordinance that would raise money for people that are overusing the system in place? I don't know the answer, but I need to support all of you and your efforts to help us, so.
So is, have we, I've only been to one meeting myself, I'm new to the board. Has other avenues been, have you looked at other avenues or?
The ordinance was discussed with Sharon by me today or yesterday, today, yesterday was holiday, we talked about it first thing this morning, and she's pulling hers, and she has a copy of ours, so. Tomorrow night, when I go at six thirty, she's gonna hand me an envelope with those two ordinances to look at. I was at City Hall, Bay City today, left a message for Dana, the city manager to call me, that I need an ordinance from them, like of that, so we look at it. Either way will work, I wanna do what's best, I certainly wanna be expeditious about it, we've got critical flooding loss areas and, paid medical responders is part of the challenge in Northern Bay County, I just know it is.
The original ordinance on this was written back in oh-six. And in February of twelve, there was a resolution to the ordinance. It's been turned over to our attorney. It is legal. His recommendation, because the question was asked to him, how do we collect our money? Revenue for the ambulance service, so in his research, he suggested that, subsection four B could be modified to allow for the charges to be levied at whatever the current rate is. Per year. But in lieu of all properties as they appear on the tax rule. It could be per dwelling, and in that scenario duplexes could be charged twice as much as a single-family dwelling. It may, however, create difficulty for any apartment structure that has ten, fifteen or more units, which, each of which will be charged the same annual amount. I did call, five different cities, I checked with Essexville, they don't have nothing. I checked with Auburn, they don't have nothing, because I think they've gone with fire authority things and what have you combined. I checked with Gladwin, they don't have nothing. I checked with Stinnes, there's nothing, but, so I did check to see if other cities had it, um, real estate, so, that's where it's at, uh.
I'd like to tell, we're gonna give them a good report, because I know you and I and Sharon have a lot to talk about once I get those ordinances in my hand tomorrow, so.
If you want, we can put it off. Till the next month.
I think that'd be a good idea, the, give more information.
We're moving, it's not set still, it's moving, I feel good that it is.
So we'll move that for the next. Your business, uh, that was, you took care of that. DDA plan renewal, Councilman Saha, Artie Tapira. Bank signatures adding, manager Muffet and Don Harder for bank signatures. You know, Olson.
I'll make a motion to add Bob Muffet and Don Harder to, um, bank signatures. Does it work?
We have a motion to add Bob Muffet and Don Harder to the bank signatures for the second, any discussion? Motion carried, oh, take that back. Uh, we're gonna have a walk on hold.
Thank you. Councilwoman Corier?
Yes.
Councilwoman Betcher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kinney?
Yes.
Councilman Saha?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laporte?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Gibson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Clerks training?
In March election, I think we got about eleven hundred dollars or twelve hundred dollars, and probably still data room, so, our request, we said Don of the training, she needs her to run the March election.
We need a motion.
It's over the limit, it's gonna be around fifteen hundred by the time we're all done, a little bit.
I'll make a motion for the clerks training, does, does support.
We have a motion for the clerks training, and second, any discussion? Motion carried.
Can you move?
Oh.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Request for variance on the use of the Jehovah's Church.
So, as council mayor may not know, the Jehovah Witness Church over on Water Street is listed for sale. Um, we had, or we do have an interested party in the building, they contacted me on the zoning because it is in kind of the middle of a residential area. I checked the zoning, um, it is permitted, or, let me back up, I'm sorry, they asked if they bought that, if they could run a hall rental, and the, interested buyer is here, so I will turn it over to him in a moment, but checking the zoning, um, it is permitted by special use or variance of, usually the zoning board, and then it would come in front of council, but since we do not have a current zoning board, um, to, kind of expedite the matter, I asked them to come to council, since you would have to approve it, you know, and anyway. So, um, I don't know if it, I'm sorry, is it?
Frank.
Frank. Is here. If you'd like to ask him questions, or if he'd like to share his plan.
Go ahead, sure. Uh, my name is Frank Kadago, uh, we're looking to purchase the building for, uh, hall rental, of course, and I know that might sound kind of alarming to begin with. Uh, but we are family people, we have seven kids, uh, two grandkids, we're very hometown proud, we live in Monwood, always been part of Bay County. Uh, our vision is to open up a hall rental, um, but also to help the community, uh, alls I've seen was positive things that could come out of it. Uh, funerals, baby showers, birthday parties, uh, would also come to a discounted price to, uh, where the hall resides, which would be here, um, in Pin County, so. Uh, that is something we've looked at, we're in the process of putting things together, um, so that's why I'm here asking that, uh, the zoning either be changed or the variance be allowed for us to operate in that capacity.
What is the zone class?
It is, it, no, it is actually considered medium-density residential. But by variance, we could allow that business, and we do have the Knights of Columbus Hall right across the street that. Simulate some of that.
There won't be a noisy neighbor, right? Keep a party outside.
No, I am a, uh, good neighbor, I play well with others, uh, we've been in the cabin business since two thousand and six. And we hold a five-star rating, and as well as, as well as our, uh, ability to work with other vendors and residents and, uh, you know, we're, we play well with them, so.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, we, we, we are, uh, very happy, we, we are, uh, involved in a lot of community banks as far as Bay County. Um, I would like to direct my attention to Pin County a little more as, uh, as I could.
Mayor, as your zoning administrator, I'm gonna recommend the council, we grant this variance tonight.
That was my question.
Yeah, zoning administrator right here is making the recommendation.
We're kind of sharing right now, but.
We've shared lots of things for a long time, but I'm officially.
You pointed Don before.
Yeah, I'm officially your zoning administrator, I think it fits, given there's another hall directly across the street, I'm gonna take that as where he's gonna be a good neighbor, I'm sure he's not gonna be visited by Matt after ten or eleven o'clock, it might be a bit too loud. So I make the recommendation, we grant this request, make some good use out of that building. Right? It's part of what we're working on, so. Thanks for your interest to the community and thanks for making the investment.
Me too.
I firmly believe that bringing business into Pin County is much needed, and I'd like to make a motion to grant this variance. Support, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to request the variance for the Jehovah Witness Church with support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience, that was a long meeting.
Council meeting time.
Yeah, you have, you have a revised schedule in your packet, the hour reflect five fifty, you'll notice the last Wednesday of June has been added, that's for our year-end resolution to help us with our audits. It's part of our planning for the plans, plan we're kind of working on, so, I, I, yeah, five fifty. People close their businesses at five o'clock, they lock the back door at five o'clock, they leave their job at five o'clock, this is the right time if you were truly wanting people to come. So if we had talked about it a couple weeks ago, so I'd bring it. And staff supports the change, we hope the council would.
That's our, of course, next meeting.
Next meeting throughout the year, and you'll have. Yep. Our last meeting was a special, we couldn't post because we didn't post it, we had a lot of things posted, so we didn't post that, so.
We need a motion.
Yes, please. Adopt the revised schedule, so we need a motion to.
I'll make a motion to, uh, revise the schedule for, for municipal council meetings to be at five fifteen for the schedule outlined.
Next year you'll see a March meeting for a workshop, we'll be budgeted just the bare bones operational budget, I do think we have a slip chance to pace the roads late in the year, we'll have to do that by budget amendment if we get to that point. We'll want to schedule that next year as a regular meeting, just like we did the year-end meeting, so we can deal with the things at hand. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for the board.
We have a motion to move, uh, meeting time to five fifteen with, uh, support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Final change of the time, because I have to work my work schedule around these meetings every month, so it's good for you to know, like, tell them what time.
Rebecca, I promise never touch it, I promise never touch it again.
This is like the fourth time I believe it's been changed just since we've been at council.
It was my understatement, you were chasing the time trying to get the most people in here, and I've worked on this for four or five years, and I know this is the right time, I know this is the right time to try to get people here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public comment, Mr. Durantechak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mike Durantechak, Bay County Commissioner, just a couple of quick things, had a great visit with the city manager and the mayor, come through, uh, the county building, introduced him to the people that hopefully help out the city. We have a request from the county clerk, you've been putting it out on her website, uh, election workers, if you'd like to work as an election worker. Right?
We're hurting too.
All over the county.
Carol and I have been really working the window today.
Uh, October the first, new driver's license, so if you haven't got your new, your license with a star and a flag, you might have difficulty getting back into the, country from what I understand, I don't, I got the star and the flag, so I think I'm good to go. Friday, this Friday, we're having kind of an emergency meeting at the county, meeting with, uh, some of the folks from McLaren, uh, and all, a few other people. Along with the nine-one-one director over the crisis right now, finding dispatchers, and also as, uh, someone out here about getting, uh, responses from ambulances and stuff, there's a real shortage of people, so we're having kind of a, I wouldn't say crisis, but we're almost to that point, uh, with dispatchers. As you may know or may not know, I'll be leaving, and I'm not running for reelection this next year, and, uh, I've kind of been working on a, a gentleman from, uh, Beaver Township Supervisor, his name is Steve Gray, he's here this evening, and he's among the endorsed to, to take my spot. Couple of months, I'll be seventy, and I, I still have a few things on my bucket list before, uh, Jennifer puts me in a hole.
What was the time for the meeting?
That's not a public meeting.
Oh, it's not public?
No. Just what the director called it, just for, with some people, I just want to let you know that, hey, the county's working on something to try and address that.
They have more money, Mike, they have more money.
I know, I know, I know. I mean, and, see, that's a village, folks, all right, so, and he's got the, they have the money.
But I'm telling you, that's a sore spot right there, because, they got the money, but they won't pay them more because they don't get any, not a known.
Well, I mean, I, I look at their budget, I look, well, you want my job, so we look at all that, they, they had a huge one, one, that's all from last year, they could have been, you know, pay your guys a little bit more, they're not gonna take off the Midland and other places like that, or they just don't even apply in the first place, so, we're working on it. I think that's one of the.
Too late for me.
I, I know, but that's one of the points that I, you know, I'm putting together figures on the pay rates and all that.
Okay.
I do.
I got, I trust you.
All right, doing the best I can.
Yes. Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, I believe, uh, we had met at the Pin County Township Hall a couple of months back. Uh, good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, uh, my name is Steve Gray, uh, I am the current Beaver Township Supervisor. Uh, I'm a lifelong resident of Bay County, uh, I was a trustee on the Beaver Township Board. Uh, I'm a lifelong resident of Bay County. Uh, I was a trustee on the Beaver Township Board for about eight years. Uh, I've been supervisor for eight years. I've been on the, uh, Bay County Employees Retirement System for about fourteen years. I've been the chairman of that for ten. Um, and my daytime job's at the Bay County Road Commission. Like to tell the residents here of Pin County, you have a wonderful city here. Um, it sounds like you folks do have some challenges on your plate. Um, I couldn't help but think as I, as I listened to your meeting, some of the challenges you're fighting are the same ones we're fighting in Beaver Township right now. Uh, we've had to raise water rates every year for the last three, four years. We've had to infuse money out of the general fund a couple of times. Um, where probably all of your residents have municipal water. In our township, and, and we're about half the size of your system, but in our township. Maybe an eighth of the residents have water, and the rest still have wells, so it's, it's very contentious with my board when we have to take general fund money to prop up the water system, because. Everybody's paying for that. Um, the ambulance service thing, we're in a, we're in a bad spot, um. With, with McLaren winding down on ambulance service. We're taking between thirty and fifty minutes to get an ambulance in Beaver Township right now. In fact, your. Your Northern Bay has ended up down there a few times, because they were the closest, so we actually may be reaching out to see whether Beaver could join in. With the city of Pin County and the northern townships, um, into that service potentially going forward at some point. Uh, I, I would ask for a round of applause for Commissioner Durancheck. I think he has done an excellent job representing. Uh, you have my word that if elected, um, I won't be home relaxing. I will be, uh, here at your city council meeting. Um, any help you need at the county level, I'd be more than happy to, to do my best to help. I will be out at the meetings at the seven townships, uh, representing them as well. Um, so I thank you for your time. Um, uh, you folks have tough jobs. Thank you for your service. Um, chin up, I think with, with manager Mopet. I think better days are, are just around the corner. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna say, as Steve said, we met a couple of months ago, and just to let you folks know, uh, we're just gonna start up again this January. For the last three years, at the towns, the township, they have a luncheon. Put on for the townships supervisors, clerks, whoever wants to show up for a luncheon. They have key speakers come in from the county, whatever. We're trying to work as a Northern Bay unit to try and. Cause we're from Lynwood Road North, we're forgotten about, so we're working together, all the entities, and. We get together for lunch, and, uh, it's next Tuesday, and I think I'll do the speaker once.
It's Troy Shank. He's with USDA. He's on the West Branch Office. If we talk about rural community grants, we'll be kind of paying close attention to.
So it's, it's a great deal. Any other public comment? Uh, gentlemen?
I will adjourn this meeting.
Make a motion. Well, I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting. I just wanna go home.
We have a motion to adjourn a second. Any discussion?